Okay, so we'll call the meeting order at 6:30. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as you can all tell, I'm playing Levi tonight, so I know I won't do near as good a job as he does, but from a parliamentary procedure standpoint. What's that? So anyhow, so all right, we'll start here. We got the Pledge of Allegiance, reading of the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? If we do, I'll entertain a motion to approve those. Is your agendas out there? If anybody needs an agenda, they're on the podium there too. Do you want to paper one? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Okay, John makes a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Paul, second.
Jason seconds. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
I already signed.
And we'll move ahead to the presentation of the financials, bills. If you had a chance to get them, we'll entertain a motion for those.
I'll make the motion to approve the bills.
Jason makes a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Nicole seconds. Is there any discussion on them? Hearing none, Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And yes for myself. And payroll?
Is it in your packet?
I don't see it in mine.
Okay. Can we table that for the next meeting?
We'll table that then until next.
Sounds good, thank you.
And we have citizens addressing the commission. Who would like to start?
Paul and Shacey are here to address the commission, for sure. Are you guys here to address the commission too?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll start with you guys. I'll give you guys a quick rundown. Shacey is a summer employee with the city. She would like to do a school co-op. And it's going to be between three and four hours each day, starting at noon after school. And she would continue doing quite a bit of the same duties that you do currently, mowing on and helping out at the shop, whatever the shop guys need. It's a program put on through school. She's getting her school agenda tomorrow. We haven't done anything officially like this in my short time here, but we have had summer help stay later into the year.
But I can talk to Jim, who has done it in the past. So it's not going to do anything for us. I guess just something I've never done.
Cool. Yep. So we're looking for thoughts, questions, and approval on that tonight, so.
Do we need a motion or anything on that? Or just want the conversation? Or what would you like?
A motion might be nice.
How long is the co-op for? Just?
The school year, probably.
You're looking the entire, right, Shacey? Yep.
Do you need a motion?
Yep, well.
I think it spans Shacey to the school co-op.
So we have a motion, so that Shacey can work for three, what do you say, three to four hours a day, is it, then?
Yeah.
Three to four hours a day during the school year? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Jason seconds, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Anything else for the better of the, while you're there? Good? Well, you must not hate your job if you want to work more. Okay.
She's been in the life.
You're good, good. Good to have you. Thanks for all your hard work. Dave?
I come in peace.
You come in peace?
Okay, the reason I'm here is I've had some concerns and some of the neighbors north of me have had some concerns about all the cattails in the ditch down there, going towards the bus park. And I didn't think we were going to have two and a half inches of rain this morning. I don't want to talk about drainage, but that's the way it is. So I was just wondering if there's something we can do with that, because that is really blocking water. There's, it is so thick down there that you cannot see the ends of the culverts. And there's actually a tree growing, starting to grow in part of it, which should be taken out of there. And I understand that it's wet. And how you get in there to do something now? I don't have a clue other than a, you know, they do make a tractor that has a long loom with a mower on it that you can drive along the edge and get in there. That last person I know that had one around here was Chad Hansen over there. That's something that would interest you. But of course, there is a lot of rocks down in there by that drain that comes off of the holes in there, so you got to watch out for that. But we're going to have to do something with that, because I have never seen, and Mike, you know, you saw it, but I don't think the, I don't think the water's been that high in our ditch than it was this morning. In three hours, we had two and a half inches of rain.
We had four inches.
Four inches, well.
It was up onto the lawn.
Over there, yeah, along. And I feel so sorry for those people on Royal Avenue, because I went over there and there was water right up there, the crime bureau agent's garage door on his driveway. So whatever you guys can do to help them, I support whatever you, you know, if you got to do a swale, or if you got to put even a 12, 18, or 24-inch culvert or something going to the south will relieve a lot of that pressure. But the only problem is, is now, and I don't know if this is any true fact or not, but I heard rumor that this new auction house is going to send all their water down our way, because the state told them that they couldn't drain into their ditch.
I don't, I heard they were putting holding ons, but I can't verify that.
Well, that's why I can't verify either. But if we get all that water from that down our way, and after two and a half, or whatever inches of rain we got today, we're going to have some issues on there. But if we get those cattails cleaned out of there, now I'm not saying to go in there with a tractor and start digging deeper, because the last time Nosts were in there, the water flows. It's just the cattails are holding the water back.
We just talked about that in the words, Levi rounded up in not too many couple meetings with those. He was looking at this. I don't even remember what he said.
I know we've talked about it periodically, but I don't know. Jay, has anybody ever talked to you about the solution?
Someone talked to me, I did buy some of the stuff that we were going to actually start mowing that down. Well, we bought a big thing with a big saw blade, kind of two-inch stump by hand. I don't think it's really the hamster, but we were going to get the loose end and get everything flowing. Unfortunately, we've been so lacking in help, we haven't found. Because it was good diligence, we just never found it.
Well, you're going to have to, and you know this, I don't even tell you this, but you're going to have to cut it, but you're going to have to spray something on it. That's what, that's what I did at my ditch. I had cattails removed in there. You cut it all down and we sprayed. I'm not scared to say I sprayed it all down to the bottom of the ditch, because that's what I did.
They make, they make the water when, they make the water when we've got it. That was our plan, we'll cut it down and hit it with that.
But it's just, it's something that's got to be done, because if we keep getting these, these torrential rains like that.
Those run all the way up by the baseball field here, the cattails.
Yep, it goes all the way. It's on the very, very, very damn, going to the river. There's a bunch of trees and a real big pile down there too. We have to be down and cut down. There's a mess down there. So it's, it's a domino all the way down. It's all bad.
And I also think that the culvert that goes into the orchard, that needs to be lowered, because that salt end on that is too high.
It'd be amazing how much we get the cattails while.
Well, yeah.
We went down there and actually threw it today and it was in trouble.
But even at that, that culvert by the bus park was running pretty full.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't be able to add too much more to that culvert. It was pretty close to full.
But the culvert that goes under the ground, that goes all the way to the north, that was only a quarter full, was pretty good.
It'll be a dump right there.
Yeah.
Yeah. We actually broke some of the all-in-one.
But that's my concern, and I talked to a couple of them down there, and they just, you know, they spend all money getting, making their regards and everything look nice, and then they have to look out their windows and see cattails and, you know. And then, of course, it doesn't help when they do construction down there too, and all their construction stuff blows down the bottom of the ditch and they don't go and clean it out. And that's all I have. I just wanted to, you know, let you know how I feel about it. There's something you can do, and something you can help the guys on Royal, the people on Royal Avenue, you know. Got to get it done, because if we're going to keep on getting these rains like this, I don't know, I'm not a weatherman, but, you know.
You're just as active.
Pardon?
You're just as active.
Not just as active. Well, I thought it was going to sprinkle.
It just went on.
I didn't think we were going to have three, all that rain in three hours.
If I stood in their boulevard, I wasn't even in the street, and I was above my knees, watering.
It's crazy.
I always got into the river, tried to get the street out and out above my legs. It was a river at that point.
But that's where that swale or whatever you guys are thinking about doing or anything, just to move that water to the, to the south, along the country. You have great hope.
But I, I was talking to Steve about that today, and he told me that from the top, and you maybe guys can verify this, because you were involved with it back when you were on the commission. He said from the top of the curb by Little Avenue to that ditch, there's a foot and a half rise.
Yep, I just looked at it when I come down.
Okay, so, so how much do you dare take that down before water from the ditch, if it comes high, goes in there?
You got a well-spoken point, because that's what's going to happen.
Right, you know, to me.
If you get a water push from the west.
Right.
Then it's going to.
Right, so to me, could you put, could you put some type of a gate valve or something there that you could, that basically is set at a certain height so that it, you know, so that, once it gets that height, the water can't go back into that ditch.
Yeah, we could physically open it.
Right, right, when it gets. Right, right, because you want, because you want, I don't know how you want to look at it, but if you're going to look at it from the standpoint, okay, like this, you got all this rain, well, obviously, if it's in the middle of the night, unless someone's watching it, you almost want it closed initially in case it gets too high, and then open it up. But I don't know, but I just, that was my main concern. I was talking to Steve about it, you know, is how, you know, because to me, there's no reason why, like a swale, or even, even if we were to put, like the blocks that you put in your, underneath your rain gutters, you know, if you put some type of a concrete channel through there and just, you know, put it at the height you need it and just run it in there, that's going to be the least disturbing of that area, you know, so.
Well, the flap gate will do the same thing. Flap gate, really.
So.
You know, the flap gate, the end of the culvert is just metal end, it's just a little open by the water.
Right, right, so.
There must have been a foot and a half difference today when we went down and made the whole comment. So higher.
So that's, that's going to be the tricky part, when you get this much rain. How do you get to, how do you get that rain out, how do you get that out of there? Because if the ditch is full, you still can't get it out real fast. I know that, I don't know if Steve called Zach. He was going to talk to him about a few things too, so. We got to do something.
The other thing is the culvert that comes from the south, from the deals farm.
Yep.
That was running cold.
Yep.
Now, if you went down to Keller, you know, that culvert come in, that was like a third of all, so.
There wasn't even any ditch over by where the fire department, in the ditch by the highway? There wasn't even any water sitting in there?
Well, there, I don't think there was much water in the west of Steen's. There's either, there really isn't much water in there. So I, I don't think that even if you did put a swale or something in there, it'd take a lot of water. You don't really see water, that much water going west of there.
I don't know if you could ever do anything with the water board to eliminate that.
Well, that was a fight, I think, when I was fifth year that I worked for the county, there was a big battle over that culvert.
Well, I think the first thing would be to obviously do something with the flow and make sure we got enough flow going to the north, and then see what happens.
That would be, that would, that would help 100%. The cattails got to be.
I'm curious, has this Chad Hansen, do you know who that is, Jay?
He's got the drain tile company over there.
Do you know who he is? No, this must be a different Chad Hansen.
You got the drain tile.
Drain tile.
Not really. I know who Peter talked about.
So if we could get a contact for him and just see what, what his thoughts are, if, because you said he had a mower, obviously can't do anything with it now, it's full of water, but maybe.
That was a few years ago that he had that, so. Somebody's got one of those. You know, they're not, they're not like, not made anymore.
So what do you think, Jay? You want to just kind of see what you can find for?
Glad they looked at us up. We won't be able to cut them down ourselves. No, we can get a machine in the, I mean, I can get around the culverts, but.
Is, is that okay with you guys? Start there?
Anything you guys can do, that's good with that.
Let's start with that and just let us know what you come up with, Jay. If that works, any of the commissioners have any? Nicole, you're the water professional. Are you good with that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thanks for coming, guys.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome to stay, or you can move on, so.
See you later.
Do you want to give it any more thought?
See you, guys.
I got a seat for you, Dave. What's that? I got a seat for you. Maybe next year.
Okay, Paul?
Yes, so it's been, it's been a couple months since we stood before you guys and were asking for permission to submit for a grant to go ahead and start raising funds for the fence. So, reason why we're here today is we're not going to ask for any funds until Levi gets back, but basically update you guys on progress and see if we can get some sort of approval to move forward with the project. I have the lease that was signed here, December 6 of 2022, between BNSF and between the city. And pretty much it stipulates that it has to be a minimum of six feet high. We're going to have the posts, they're going to be in five-foot sections. And it's going to run from, again, it's going to run from the sidewalk all the way until First Avenue, which is around about 325 to 330 feet of fence. So that's going to be the material that we are striving for is going to be that solid composite two-by, or two, sorry, two-by-six, right, two-by-six composite board. That would then go up until First Avenue, and then after First Avenue, because on the map here, it says that there needs to be a break in case of emergency services is needed to access BNSF, the railroad. And so after that break, after First Avenue, is when we would do, it would still have to be six foot high, but it would be somewhat of a cheaper material for, because that's where we kind of perceive where parking, or excess parking, or snow dump in the winter time would be done. So we did meet with Amy Macbeth on Friday. When I say we, it was Jim, Melissa, myself, Paul. We all met with Amy Macbeth. She is the general director of public affairs for BNSF, pretty much from here, stretching down to Texas and going to the east. Did you catch that? Okay. So for sure, from here down to Texas. And there's several other public affairs individuals that work from here to there, but they all report to her, so she's pretty much a much larger cog in a system, but she's still one of, one of the higher up there's. We ran through, it was about a two-hour meeting, hour and a half, discussing our vision for what we want to do with the park. We discussed the lease agreement as well. Basically, what the conclusion was, was she cannot help us with the fence in terms of funding, as it states here, that the city agreed to put the fence in. We were supposed to be having, or when I say we, the city was supposed to have the fence done 270 days from the time that this date, or from when it was signed. And in which case, if it's not done, BNSF can then go in and they can put the fence in themselves, and it would still be built to the city regardless. That being said, Jim asked, what type of fence would you guys put in? She said it's probably going to be the cheapest, ugliest fence that, that can be done. They'll already save money, but it would still be built to the city. We rebutted, basically saying that we're trying to raise the funds. Do it right the first time, make it look nice, because it is a representation of everybody that's driving from 29 to 81, or vice versa. It is a representation of Hillsborough. So I think if we put in the cheapest fence, it's just going to represent what Hillsborough basically wants to put into its downtown. And so we, us being downtown, I don't think we want to see the cheapest auction being put in there. Year-to-date, oh, backtracking. So since she cannot, or BNSF cannot fund the agreement for the fence, she has put forth, saying that she's going to do a letter of support. This letter of support is going to help us with, hopefully, showing other grants that we're going to be applying for, that we do have the backing of BNSF, that she does see our vision. It's going to include in there everything that BNSF has pretty much done for the park in kind hours, any other additional funding that they have put in to give us the park. Basically showing that they are on board, and hopefully whoever else that we're asking for, for other phases of the park can get on board too. She also said, since we are past that 270-day point to complete the fence, she's going to talk to the, the other individual from BNSF that signed the lease agreement.
When was that signed? Was it? When was that lease signed, sorry?
December 6, December, yeah, December 6 of 2022. It was supposed to be 270 days from, from lease. But she is asking for a year extension. We're going to try to follow up on that and see what comes of that. She's going to ask for a year extension, basically updating the other end of, of the person that signed this lease, saying we didn't do anything before, but we are in progress now. Progress being is, right now, we have, we just had another donation from Goose River Bank, so we are at $7,600 donated, which then allows us to get that $5,000 grant. So right now, we are at $12,600. And it's still growing. That doesn't include any of the funds that we've acquired from the giveaway, where people can purchase a ticket. And then there's a chance to receive either a fire pit or grill. So if we sell all of those tickets, we could potentially raise another $3,000 to $4,000. But that being said, is, we are looking for, or looking to move forward and starting to lay the posting. The posts have already been purchased from the communication committee. They've already purchased the cedar posts, they're treated cedar posts, and the tubing that the posts slide into. So the, the rest of the fence hasn't been purchased yet, and that's where we're still acquiring funds for depending on what material we can get, so.
I want you to spend on the posts.
Do you have those numbers? Because I was not at the communication committee.
They didn't have any numbers. They never had any numbers on a totals.
Okay.
At least I've never seen them. I'm, I'm sure Levi has got them, or Tara's got them, or somebody.
And I heard secondhand, I haven't seen Levi since, but I heard secondhand that it was funds from other projects that those funds were allocated for, that they ended up saving on. So they utilized those funds in order to purchase said posts and, and tubing. So the 1,200, yeah, 12,600 is still untouched so far.
Does anybody have any questions for Paul? So what is your ask of us tonight?
Ask is, and unfortunately Levi's not here, and I didn't want to bother him while he's out of town. When I'm on vacation, my phone is off. But he has a big portion of the schematic in his computer, basically laying out two specs of the park, including the fence. Again, six feet high minimum, five feet in between posts, with 325 to 330 feet stretching from the sidewalk to First Avenue southwest, just north. Basically, if we can, if we can get you those specs once Levi gets back, can we go ahead and get approval now to start digging? Obviously, we would have to call before we dig, but to start digging said post holes, so we can start setting posts. So then that way, we can move forward with the fence and not have to wait another month.
Any comments? Questions?
Question I had, how far west of the railroad here is it going to be? How far east from the curb?
So it is 50 feet, again, in here as well. It's 50 feet from the center of the main track, which there is lines that are marked out there. I believe it was 63 feet from the curb to where those white lines are, which I thought it was a lot less. I thought it was 50 feet wide. It's actually 63.
Are you any concerned of not having like the L shape? People would still be able to get around the end of it? I guess, not that they can't get around an L shape either, but just another added feature of getting people behind the fence and on the railroad.
Well, it will come down, this end here will come to the curb, right?
This, this end will come, that, I'm not sure, because it doesn't say that there's specifications that it needs to. It just says that it needs to go up until, but it also states in here that they still need access to the land that we're leasing from them in case if there's some sort of emergency, so.
Yeah. So I'm just curious, because I'm, somebody who's no whistle zones, are those fences continuous?
Yeah, things like, or cities like Mandan, yeah, they're no whistle zones, where unfortunately, you don't have that kind of money to afford a no whistle zone.
I was just wondering, if it continues, they must have some form of access through those fences, that some.
It does, it does state in here that if there's any sort of locked areas, gates, buildings, that we need to provide them with a key in order to get access to anything that's on, on that land. And then again, just because we get approval from you guys as well, we still would then have to write a written proposal showing all the specs to BNSF and still get written, or approval for our written submission from them as well. or approval for our written submission from them as well.
Wouldn't it be best before you dig holes to get that approval?
Correct, right. But if I, if we get approval from you guys first, we can, before we can even dig still, we're going to also get approval. But basically, the point of tonight is if we can try to get the cart before the horse and get approval from you guys. When Levi gets back, we can submit those specs to BNSF, the respective parties that need it, and then get approval from them. And then we can start digging right away versus waiting till Levi gets back and then needing to wait until next month. Because the way that we see it is, time is a little bit of the essence. We have until December to utilize the grant. The, if we don't utilize the grant and we don't meet the deadline of what we were trying to do, we can't resubmit for the Trail County grant next year. But if we do meet this deadline, we can reapply for other phases through Trail County for this grant. So yes, it's just $5,000, but it, I mean, at this point, if we can try to use or try to acquire any funds where we can, the goal is to try to alleviate a lot of the funds coming from the city and the taxpayers. That's why we're doing a private funding.
So we should be expecting that you're going to come asking us for money down the road?
It does say that the city was, was to build the fence. We would, I'm not sure if you read the paper, but we're seeking to apply our funds from HEDC in order to make this happen, as well as any additional funding was to be used for like the 30% down or the matching funds of other grants that we were going to be applying for. But somebody much more knowledgeable than me pretty much brought to light that we should probably break that, break those ass up. So we have some private funding. If we can get HEDC, if we can get some more from Trail County, if we can get some from the city, if we can get some in smaller pieces, it won't, it won't be one party carrying the burden. And then we can go forth and then from there, get all the additional fundings from private grants, state grants, federal grants, et cetera.
I think if I read right, wasn't HEDC is one of their big concerns also for damage and the maintenance of the fence?
That was one of, one of their things. And one of the things was the ice buildup against the fence. And that's why it states in here that there's that 50, that 50 foot easement. Because the train, or the, the speed at which the train is supposed to be traveling, snow blowing off of a train going that, that speed that's required is 30 feet. So I believe that's why there is that 50 foot easement to prevent damage or things coming off of the rail tracks and damaging the ground. So that, that's just my deductive reasoning. I don't know if that's, that's a sure answer.
I guess to me, that's my biggest concern is what does that cost down the road? And are we constantly going to be maintaining it? Because I just don't, I'm still not comfortable that we're going to find a material that's not going to be very costly to keep up.
Jay, they never get close with, there's never snow close to that area, is there? Other than what you push through there?
I'm not so much worried about the snow. It's more the rocks and stuff that kick up.
That was, I think this, this fence.
I would be more concerned about the voiding, I would choose. With the tubing, there is going to be spacing underneath. So there's, there's a little bit of a gap where the board is going to be to allow for blacking.
But this is, if you haven't looked at, have you guys looked at all here? It's actually composite lumber. So it isn't like decking or anything. It's actually like a two by four that's composite. So it's going to take, you know, even if you hit it with a rock, you're probably not going to damage it. So it's pretty, if that's what the guards on.
And also too, I mean, we can always see how the first year goes. If we do see that there is some sort of damage occurring, the, the material is removable. So we can potentially remove it during the winter time or whatnot and then store it. But I mean, when we have the farmer's market out there, we haven't had any rocks get kicked up, other than if our kids throw them. But otherwise, there's been no rocks being kicked up by those trains.
Where would you start?
That's a good question.
I don't think, I don't think we even want to talk about that. If it, if it can hold up, we got to take it out. We're going to have to figure out something different.
Yeah. Well, that's, I guess that's where I'm getting at. Like if we haven't taken out, well, that's, that's all that money that's spent that was no good or wasted. If it's extremely expensive to keep up, look at that money we're putting towards the council. That's, that's my concern. I don't want the city getting tied into where we have the council. We, we have another money pit that we're always throwing money at.
You have any questions, Nicole?
I have none.
None? Any more questions? This is how I see it. You have beautification meeting on Monday. What I'd like to see is, is pictures, prices, quotes of what it's going to cost and, and address some of these concerns about the rocks and maybe talk to that company with those composite boards and see if that's going to be an issue at all. And I'd also like, because we have to put up some type of a fence, what, what would be the cost of us to put up just this plain chain link fence? Up there. So basically what I'm, it kind of goes back to what, a little bit, I think playing off with, because we have to put up some kind of a scent fence, correct, JR? At some point? So if we put up the cheapest, ugliest fence, it would be probably a chain length fence. So what's that going to cost us as a city? You know, so let's say it's going to cost us $30,000. Well, you know, if this is going to cost you $50,000, well, the city should be able to help with some of that cost because we'd have to do it regardless. Does that make sense?
Right.
So, but I'd like to see more of a, of a written down cost estimate of what you're, what you're looking at doing. And then from that point, we'll be meeting in two weeks. We don't meet once every month. We meet two weeks from now. So then at that point, we can give you more.
I thought it was next Monday.
What's that?
I thought it was next Monday.
I'm talking city commission.
Gotcha.
So, and beautifully, that way you've, that way you've been able to run it across all your, with all your beautification people in one thing. And I think you had a rep from economic development that was going to be at that meeting also. So you can have that discussion and kind of finalize plans and get a consensus from your group that then, then they can come back, either myself or Levi, we can come back and say, this is what we've kind of got. And then you guys can all decide what, if you want to move forward with that type of fence or if you want to look at other options.
I mean, but again, you've also been on the beautification and you've seen all the prices that we've come forward with. I don't have those, Levi has those.
What I'm saying is, is you have, you'll have, you'll be able to, after your beautification next meeting, you'll have all those numbers. You'll have all those prices. You'll have all the options. Okay, what if we put a, if we put a chain link fence, a galvanized one? Do we put up a black one? What are, what are some of the cost comparisons? I think we should, we should have those so that the commission can make an accurate discussion on, you know, what, what route they would like to go, especially if they're going to be putting money into it, so.
I mean, and this goes back to, going back to the initial argument is what's going to be the most, least maintenance. And that's what was settled on was the composite decking. And that was because, for the composite boards. And that was for 25 plus maintenance free bottomless boards. And I mean, to be honest, I, I was raised not to do the same work twice. If you're going to do something right, you do it right the first time. And I just see that also as a waste of time and money if we do put in a chain link fence and then have to rip it out later to put in other materials. So I just feel like that's going to be wasted time, wasted money if we do the same one twice. So that's why we've, we have been for the past eight Mondays now, trying to brainstorm what is going to be the best route. And as far as I was concerned, or as, as far as my understanding, and again, I wasn't at the last beautification day, many, meeting, but it was decided that it was going to be the composite board. And that was again, because it's 25 year plus maintenance free. It's, it slides in and out because if there is a damaged board, we can easily just slide out the boards, replace it with another board. Or if it's graffiti, we can slide it out and replace it. And then there's no arm help out. But, but if it's a chain link fence and that's what's decided, I would just pull, pull my name off of it because I just don't think it's, it's something that's conducive of what downtown is trying to be. Since HEDC's meeting last Monday, again, it's, it's what, now 13 vacant buildings? And I just think that we need to do something to enhance the visual appeal of downtown. And I don't think a chain of fence is going to be that. I know it might be cost conducive, but then having to redo it later, who's going to redo it? We're going to have to go through all the same hoops again. So if we do it right the first time, we have the volunteers now. We have the people that have the drive now. But if we have to do it again, we're not doing it again.
I'm not saying I'm against it or shit.
Correct.
But, but what I'm saying is, I'll say two things. One, I think we should as a city have the right to see the price difference between the two. Two, I don't think that park right there is going to determine whether or not businesses come downtown. I don't think that park is going to have that much bearing on that. I haven't heard too many businesses come up to me and tell me, if that fence doesn't go there, I would never, ever think of moving my business downtown.
But how many businesses are here right now? And, and that also goes to.
Nicole, you have a business on Main Street. Would that fence determine whether or not you're going to have that business there?
No, just because we don't have the right marketing in place to drive traffic downtown.
I think there's a lot of other avenues that we should research as far as trying to get. I don't, and no disrespect, I don't think that we should play the fence avenue as what's going to bring our marketing and businesses downtown. I think we need other, look at other avenues of how we're going to build this downtown and make it better.
And it's, it's not just the fence. It states in here that before we can do anything else to that park, before, actually, before anybody can even use that park, there needs to be a fence. So it's no more downtown car shows. There's like, it's all in here that in order for any of these events to happen, there needs to be a fence.
I think to Paul's point, what he's saying is regardless of the fence, if they're putting on, you know, marketplace utilizing downtown street, that is what drives traffic downtown to Sealy Street. We don't have a lot of businesses that are fortunately open on there. But I think what they're saying is if you can drive the traffic down there, maybe some people would want to, for a chance, go into one of those Main Street businesses too.
And it's.
I can see both ways.
It's not just, you know, it starts with a fence is basically what this all comes down to. Fence needs to happen regardless. But in order for the rest of the improvements to happen to, to set part, to happen, there needs to be a fence. And.
Also, prior to us bringing this up to Burlington, this contract you said was signed in 2022?
Correct.
They've never made a statement and came out and saying you have to put this fence up.
And, and that's something that.
I think we kind of brought that attention to ourselves.
And that's something that she had stated is that sometimes some of these things do fall off the radar. But if whoever is in charge of that comes across that again, then they basically see us in violation of contract and they would either do a fallback effort or they would again, put up the fence themselves and it would be the ugliest fence and then they would still be able to see it regardless.
Right. I guess, I, I think I agree with Paul. I'd like to see what our options are and, and let that play out with the beautification and all that in.
I guess I'll make a comment. I went and looked at Castleton's and I don't know who put it up, the Burlington Northern there, Castleton did. They have like a bi-toxie chin up downtown, really long here, essentially going to be our railroad part.
It's a little different layout there than usual.
Didn't somebody show a picture of that one time that I'm eating here?
I probably did. It's a little different situation there. It's not exactly the same as here. But I think to move forward, and you guys can, correct me if you're wrong, but I think beautification meets Monday. I think Levi will be there. I think we can address all these because I know that economic development had questions. I think between me and Levi, we can bring up what our other concerns are here. Listening to what you guys had tonight, I, I hear your concerns. I do also lean more towards, to me, it's about beautific, it's about making this area look nicer. Whether it brings people to town or not, I don't care. It's a bonus to me, but to me, it's, I want it to look nice. And that's what, and that's, to me, it's about beautification, like I said. If it brings businesses to town, great. But if it don't, at least it's neat and it's clean and it looks nice. So I think that's where I would, if it's okay with you guys, I guess that's where I would leave it. And then at that point, Levi and me and Paul, whatever, can come back to the next city commission meeting and we can, we'll have more facts on prices, for sure prices, written down prices on what it is and comparative prices as far as, you know, if we had to do this chain link fence, whatever to do. Because that's going to help you as far as your cost too. If you're talking $50,000 for this composite fence and we got to pay, if the city's going to, if it's going to cost us $40,000 to put a chain link fence up, well, you've already got $12,000 raised, you know, plus, and you're just in the beginning stages. You know, we, and between economic development and everything, maybe we can make a composite fence work once we have all those numbers and we can decide what's best. And maybe, I think he has a few questions about, about the durability, the rocks and everything. Maybe you ask the company that makes them boards and say, this, we're getting questions from the city council about, what's your thoughts on this? And then they'll maybe say how you feel, so.
Paul, was last time you were, you guys were in here, wasn't your wife going to talk? Or somebody to New York Mills have some type of a fence over there?
Yeah.
Did you guys ever talk to them and see?
Yep, so that was, that was actually, she has the emails, but that was actually one of the things that they said is because they have, they have pressure treated lumber. They said that is, it is a nightmare because they have to stain it constantly. They have to replace the wooden boards constantly. They said if it was up to them, and I, I'll get you a printed email, but it says if it was up to them, they would have gone composite because it would have been a lot less maintenance.
Like Paul said, I, I think that would be a good question for the company that makes this board to get it, to run that by them. Maybe, maybe they've done, you know, stuff like that next to the railroad and it's, they can save from, for a fact that it stood up. Like I said, it's concerns that I have. I just don't want to get into a huge money pit.
No, 100%.
I guess my question would be, yeah, that composite lumber can take a rock or something in it. I mean, you'll see the dent possibly, but does that compromise anything if water gets on it? Because there's, I don't know this for a fact, whether there's like a special coating on it that breaks and then if the water starts getting infiltrated in there, it starts running faster.
It's, it's a solid one. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a solid composite. It's not like the decking material that has like those, those holes that run through it. It's completely solid all the way through. So it's, that material is through and through. Same for the color, it's through and through. So even if there is.
There's some holding all that together though.
Right.
The stairs door also are composite. And so it's very, very durable.
Yeah.
Very durable. The only thing is when it rains, it's slick, but that's going to be an upward, right? You know what I mean?
It'll get them from plating.
Exactly.
Just, I have a sprinkler on it.
You know, honestly, Paul, I, I think if you do like the steps like Paul's talking, I think that's going to answer a lot of questions and I'd make all these committees come around and maybe, maybe even actually up in the end, speed up the product.
Right. And again, Levi wasn't here and how to respect to him if he was on vacation. I'm not going to sit there and blow this one and ask him something.
Yep.
So since he wasn't here, we don't have the stuff right in front of you. I was just trying to get ahead of it. So then that way, we had, had the initial approval. Because again, like Paul was saying, we do have somebody from, that was just voted into HEDC. She's from the Christensen Group over in Fargo and has a lot of construction experience. And I, I used to work over at the Tapper and I've seen the buildings that we put up absolutely like architectural feats, to put it lightly. But yeah, so I think she, if we can get her on board and she, and she can help us with some of the, the final touches of things, I think she's a great asset. But again, we, we do already have the general director of public affairs. We took her around, she walked the grounds with us and she sees our vision. And so I guess, yeah, we'll just get you guys interested.
A lot of things, requests that we have are the same thing that HEDC. So you'll basically be killing two birds with one stone anyway. So, so they'll, they require that and so I think we'll leave it at that, okay? Thanks for all your efforts, Paul. Appreciate you doing that, you and your wife, putting the time in.
Thanks.
You bet. Thank you.
Bye, Paul.
Okay, moving forward. Okay, moving forward. Jay, do you want to address? Okay. So we're going to go ahead with, uh, city commissioner reports. We can start with, I guess, Jason.
Um, Sheriff's, I'm assigned. We had a new deputy hired today, um, or start today, I should say. So, um, at some point we'll get, once he gets up, out with the night guys, we'll get him into one of the meetings here to introduce him.
Do they float or do they, is that for Hillsborough? Do they hire for certain areas?
Oh, yeah, they all. Yep. So that's why I usually try to get, um, each of the new officers in to as many of the city councils as we can. Um, cemetery, uh, Casey and I are working on a couple of dead trees in there, getting a quote to see what that's going to cost. And then I think she found a couple of other dead ones and depending on price and stuff, the guy wasn't able to get us a quote before tonight to talk about it, but probably next meeting we'll try to see what, see what the numbers are and see what the city wants to do and how much we want to get rid of. So that's, that's all I think I have.
Okay, John?
Yeah. So Jay said he had the guy from, uh, A O G B, correct? Uh, come and look at that irrigation. Once they go, they turn on the, the number of leaks that they could only count was eight. And there's probably more since it didn't go all the way to the end of the irrigation or to the other side of the road. And you said how much it was? Three? You said at least three.
At least three, just to get it to the point where you could say.
So there's going to be way more than that, just to fix the rest of it.
It was pretty, pretty bad.
Yeah. So I don't know what direction we want to go with that. If we want to try to chase it with another guy or do we go back to, uh, Green Earth, right? Casey was the one that originally, I think it was Green Earth.
Yep.
Yes. Yep.
And tell them that they have to come out and fix it, but we're kind of running into the issue that they did that three years ago now? Two and a half? Yeah.
What was, what's the Jay again? I'm just drawing a blank.
Jacobson.
Jacobson. There you go.
Jacobson Brothers.
Okay. Well, how, how would we address any of that as far as paying or how does that, where would that even come from or to address that issue? Or is that something we?
As far as doing the work for this.
Fixing it, yeah, yeah. Is there any, there's no way dedicated funds for that out there, is there yet as of now?
There's not. Um, yeah, I mean, the only funds that you guys have would be like a few general fund dollars, a little bit there that you could be flexible with. I mean, there's nothing, there's, I don't believe there's a construction fund set up under Riverwalk. There is, like, we'll see it in the budget. So I'll look through here, but.
I don't think there's anything.
Yeah, nothing, nothing dedicated. The street fund is stressed, so would not pull from there. Um, let me look in the lineup quick. Hold on.
How about like buildings and grounds? Where that all comes, general fund or where does that all come from?
That is general fund. Yep.
Yeah, I don't know. We need to make any decisions on it tonight per se, but just giving it out there for you guys' information.
Well, I just think it's something we need. If, if we're looking at doing something, we got to figure out, okay, where would the money come from? What's, what's our options?
Running the ball. Let's do it. How about like for next year?
Yeah, yeah. But we just have to make, get some ideas. You'll have to just get us some ideas of what you want, what you want.
Did you have that, that other guy coming to take what they have here? Yeah, I haven't heard back from him.
I don't know about you, but I, I've not heard anything bad about Jacobson Brothers.
I have.
I, I've heard nothing but good things about them. And I'd say they're the only one out there, but how were they, did they respond?
Visiting with them too, they were interested in doing like, uh, a hundred and fifty dollars a day a year to treat it to make sure it's good, it wouldn't break again. What they were interested in doing, um, they'll, they need to, uh, keep all the leaks under control. They come in once a week and it's not full. So they have many options they would do for us, but just decided to.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of what we would all want them to do. Their, every, every spring and fall, I see more and more of their signs in Hillsborough. It used to be all the other company.
Yep.
Yeah, I think I visit with them probably once quite.
Super personable. I've, I've, I've done business with them and I'm happy.
Could, could you get bids from, from a couple of different bids on as far as, okay, this is to fix the irrigation? This would be to do the maintenance of it and, uh, at the end of the year, maintenance and stuff like that or? You know, it might be, it might be if they're reasonable, it might be cheaper than us trying to figure out all the time and finding the, finding the solution to put in and.
I can't remember how that set up with low rates, but is that something the main maintaining? Is that all on us?
I think it's all on us, isn't it?
Or, or.
I think it is.
Cause I can't remember if there's something there for them to try to keep it presentable so they sell lots and stuff. I, I felt like I read something in the paper about it.
Okay. I, I don't think so, because I think I've asked this before and it, and I think it's falls on us. But, you know, one thing I can throw out there, I can't say it'll happen, but, you know, economic development is trying to do the best they can to get that market out there too. You know, if we're talking three thousand dollars to get that straightened out and out there and get it looking nicer, if we're on the hook for it, you know, if, if maybe, maybe it's a request that I'd be more willing to ask, not to say we'd get it, but I'd be more willing to ask if we had those bids and what it would be and what we're going to get for it. Because there's been an awful lot of concern out there about how that looks and what we can do to make it look nicer. And, uh, you know, you could, you could argue, do we have the expertise to make that look as nice as what, uh, Jacobson Brothers would? I don't know. Are you a lawn professional?
Visiting with them, they have knocked it out once a week, three, an hour.
You know, and, and then plus, right. So I don't know what you guys think. I think maybe just get those.
I got to visit with them tomorrow.
Yeah, get some bids and then come back to us. And, uh, and like I said, I, I would, you know, depend upon how big they are. They want to move that out there. So they may be eager to share a little money, you know, to help us out and help the development out. You know, it's, it, we're not any further behind if they say no. So if that's okay with everybody.
We, I mean, we're super responsive and they get right back to you. I, I have no problem.
Sure. You okay with that, Nicole? To have them get some bids on that and John? Okay. Okay. So you got more homework. You may even want a notepad.
Where's Paul? Paul, you got your days?
Paul, it's way back because I don't really watch them all.
Make sure this is recording. It's real good, so.
Are you trying to fall asleep or what?
I guess the only other thing is, uh, you guys probably already know this, but the chips you finished up last week, great, if you can say that. So yeah, and that's all we have on the streets. And, uh, Bambi hasn't got back to me yet about the playground.
Okay.
She said she sent me an email, so I'm still waiting for that because I didn't contact her before the meeting tonight to see if she had any updates.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
That's it. You're up, Nicole.
I have nothing from the airport side. Um, on the water side, this afternoon, looks like I received the, um, a report, a representative from the Department of Environmental Quality conducted a routine inspection, for the Safe Drinking Water Act and Clean Water Act. So, um, I should have, I'm inquiring about some of this because of the dates listed of when they did it. And then they have dates where there's a timeline to be corrected by. However, um, some of them have thirty days, but it says the report was dated July second, today is August fourth. Um, so, um, I'm going to ask about that for any extensions because some of it listed, there's like something in here of thirty days putting a fence around, the facility to keep out livestock and discourage trespassing, um, and what it has to contain. Some of it's seven days, like the water storage reservoir vent is not screened. Um, so I'll be, I'll be, uh, kind of following up with Zach on this, on if anything has been completed or, you know, what we need to do to complete this, but it looks like some of it might require some money to correct the actions on it. So I just want to give a heads up on that.
Are they, are they giving you any times on when it has to be corrected? Or that's what you're going to ask?
So the letter is dated July second, but today's August fourth. And if you scroll through the defects and the corrective actions, some of it says ninety days, thirty days, seven days. Um, so all the thirty and seventy days, we're, we're past that date. So I'm not exactly sure. I'm actually going to call this person and see like, are we supposed to report back to them that they have been corrected? Or can we have an extension? Cause I don't.
Would Zach know anymore being he was there with them?
Well, he might. And that's, that's why I need to, to touch base with Zach on it. Um, like I said, I got it this afternoon, so I just kind of perused through it.
Doesn't look like it happens real regularly, huh? Twenty-two is the last time?
Yeah, it has, um, it, it's been a while. Um, but Zach had asked about this. He said it was pretty important. So we, we went ahead and did it, um, cause he, he knew it had been a while. So it's some pretty cool information in there. Um, but yeah, their, their timeline of fixing it was, in my opinion, rather short for a report coming out.
And we just got the report in the mail today.
Exactly.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So I mean, it's, it's, I, you know, it's out of our hands when it comes past the, the due date of when it was done. So. But I'll, I'll check with Zach and maybe I'll have a report on exactly what is it that we do need to do? Like as far as like fencing or things like that, or if some of these are minor repairs we have to do.
And with the potential addition out there, do we coordinate at that point with them?
Right. Yeah. And I don't know how that's going to affect the extension piece too, as far as like the fences concerned, like.
Right.
You know?
Put a fence there and then they add on fifty yard and feet, take the fence back down.
But like this one here, um, storage facility is in need of sandblasting and painting. So that's, that's obviously going to cost some, some money there and that timeline is ninety days. So it looks like we're probably going to have to five thousand dollars to come in compliance basically. Or if Zach on it, see what we need to do. Um, but otherwise that's, that's all I have.
Thanks, Nicole. Uh, on, uh, from my side on the electrical, uh, I know that, uh, Casey is currently kind of trying, working on finalizing some type of funding, her and Levi for the electrical. Uh, and, and DGR is also working on the bid sheets to hopefully when we have the finalization on the funding side of it, that we can go ahead and bid that. We're hoping for this winter, but, uh, we'll see how everything goes there. I don't think Casey knows any more than that, right? As far as financing, it's just going to be.
We, um, we're looking into USDA funding for the entirety of the project. So just, just as an option. So they've got, you know, they've got some really great programs out there. So, yeah.
So we're just kind of finding what our best option is for that to move forward with now that it's been approved and that we're actually going to do it. They should have that. Uh, I was out to Bismarck last week and unfortunately we did not get the grant. You may have heard that, that we applied for. There was, uh, I believe seven or eight that applied for it. And looking at, looking at the people that had applied for it and what they were doing, yeah, we probably were down there. But we were a long shot, but that's just my novice opinion of looking at what those other entities were doing. Uh, on economic development, they had their meeting last week. They had a, they got a new member on their board now, Sarah Reimers, uh, Reimers. And, uh, like Paul had mentioned, her background is in construction, so we feel she's going to be a good, a good asset to that, uh, bringing, bringing more information and, uh, and so they nominated it and voted her through. She's not shy, right, JR? She's, she's willing to speak her, you know, if she has a problem with something or a concern, you know, from the first meeting, she's, you know, hit the, get the, kind of hit the ground running and, uh, has, not afraid to ask some questions. So hopefully she will be a, a good, a good source for economic development and keeping that a balanced, you know, you know, not everybody just a yes person, more let's ask the questions. Uh, a lot of conversation was made there about, about this fence project and they had some questions similar to what we had. So hopefully those questions will get answered before they meet next. Uh, and of course the beautification is next Monday and of course we'll be having a lot of questions and concerns there to deal with. My hope is, is that we, uh, is that we come up with an actual plan, you know, uh, what, what, what it's going to look like, what it's going to do, the fencing options, what are, what are our options on it, what they want to do? And I, 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 I am a huge in economic development, but I do agree with you, Jason, to a degree that, you know, I'm not, it's not going to hurt to put it there, but I don't think it's going to be the end all. But I know, but my, I know that we should put something that's attractive there and, and kept up nice and it's only going to help. So, uh, but I, but I do have, like everybody else, we do have more questions. And I think, uh, economic development was a little, you know, I know price shock or sticker, sticker shock, you know, what they were asking there. So, but, uh, I, I think, I think, uh, contrary to what they may feel, I think nobody's against them, but they just have more questions. And that's just, that's the way I feel. I don't know if that take you took JR from it. Is that nobody, on economic development was really against it. They just had more questions, just like here. So, okay? And, uh, let's see if that was everything there. I think that's all I have. So.
I'll give you a list of questions too.
What's that?
Could Levi give you a list of questions too for him?
No, he never gave me anything. So he missed the boat there unless it's in here someplace and I didn't see it. But, uh, okay, uh, city officers, I don't know. Do you have anything, Jay? Any, everything went okay today as far as the water? I see you were.
With a challenge.
It was a challenge, but.
We were discharged today unfortunately. So we had to do some paperwork there, but.
What's that?
We had a discharge unfortunately.
Well.
Do some paperwork.
Yeah, there's not much you can do. It's not the first time and it won't be the last time. So unless you want to add a few more lift stations?
Bro, do we know, do we know if there were people pumping in? That seemed like was the case, that people were pumping into the city.
We're pretty sure that's the main reason people are.
Cause I, I kept forgetting to remind you, we never did that spring, uh, the switch over. Cause I know some people in the winter, they have a switch over that goes through the city drain.
On the Facebook?
Versus outside.
It would come and sound every year, but.
Now you think.
Unfortunately, a lot of people like in that kind of sense.
Like I said, my rain gauge said four inches and it was, I know it was empty, so.
It had to have been close to four.
With the water standing around, I, it would not bend that high with two inches of rain. No way. So. And I, I heard at seven o'clock, it was coming down really hard. I talked to a couple of people that said they could barely keep the rain off their wipers when they went. Were you out at that time?
Well, we have a hydroplane right in the bridge. I got.
Okay. You know, so I think she, so.
A Ford truck underneath the.
I just was told that.
Yes. He hydroplaned his back end. It was totally crushed and it spun him around and broke his front axle.
I haven't heard, did you, have you heard anything of water in anybody's basements? I haven't heard of anything. So. There were a few? Okay. So, but were they things that under normal rain did, that already had it in the past?
A lot of, um, a couple of them were car faults. They were evaporated in their backyard. We went and checked their drains from ours that way. It was unfortunate.
I don't know how fast Will Avenue would drain, but I noticed a lot of other areas that I saw, I was surprised how fast they didn't, they did go down. So, you know, so. Zach kind of gave me the one, you know, the, the beginner's class on some of that stuff. So it was kind of interesting listening to that. So. But, uh, so I learned something there. So I'm sure he.
Goodness, we have to do drainage to the, to the.
Sure.
But I have a small pipe that I would probably draw.
Yeah. So, but, you know, but this is just an example of, you know, you know, when we talk about the drainage, you know, this was over, I don't know, three, four hours? I don't know. You know, just imagine if you'd had that in two hours, you know, so. You know, that's, you know, and you can't obviously be ready for everything, otherwise you have some major oversizing, you know, but it just, uh, it does kind of emphasize to me a little bit about the public that they have to be aware too that, you know, they're, they have to be aware a little bit of what's going on in their basements and things like that too. That, you know, we can only move the water so fast with what we have and, uh, unless they want to spend millions and millions of dollars to upgrade things, we're kind of, you know, we gotta go that way. So. Any other comments from today's rain that anybody heard? No news is good news? Mr. JR? Mr. JR?
Nothing for me.
You're up Casey.
Um, Levi wanted me to report.
Yeah, did you just get that? Thanks a lot Jason.
Sorry.
Abby at AE2S is willing to help the city write those two grants Levi was talking about at the previous meeting. So good to go there. Um, and then the rest of the items, I did, um, send to JR in an email. So I figured that was a little more efficient. Thank you.
Just so you thought you were having, thanks to.
Um, the only thing that, um, I didn't get to talk to Nicole about, we do need to sit down and, um, with JR, this is on your to-do list too JR, East Central River Water, uh, the contract. So the five of us, uh, the three of us plus Zach and Levi should find a date to sit down and look at it and get it finalized, so. Um, so yeah, we'll keep Levi's short and sweet. Um, mine, we ordered the new tent today, or the tent replacement, um, sent the wire for that, and we got insurance money to pay for the entire thing, so that was good. Um, yeah, other than that, finalizing some audit things and keeping busy with Tyler Tech. So that's about it for my office. And then I'll be, I'll be gone at the lead course this week, so I'm leaving tomorrow, so. Yeah, anything for me from any of you guys? Okay, well then that's it, so.
Okay. Did, uh, anything from the sheriff's office that you know?
No.
And nothing from engineer? Uh, new business, preliminary budget approval. Casey?
Sure.
Tell us what you want.
What I'm looking for from you guys tonight is the items in blue. Can you see that okay? Yeah, okay. The items in blue are your levied funds. Um, these are the, the main funds that we talked about the other night, um, over in the commission chambers. Um, these numbers are based off of the 2024 levied numbers plus three percent. Um, so anything else I'm not looking to discuss tonight, this is the main thing that we're looking to discuss. Everything else is flex, able to be flexible from here until the end of the year to discuss. Um, this is just kind of what we need to have prepped and ready to go for, uh, for residents and citizens to come and view. So my main question is, do you want me to keep the numbers right where they're at for these levied funds? Keep a three percent increase, or do you want me to back it off?
I would say for the preliminary, keep it up.
Do you need a motion or anything like that, or just agreement, or do you need a?
I think, I think a motion would be nice, just on the levied funds, so.
Just on the levied fund to three percent, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we got, uh, Jason made a motion to prove that. The preliminary budget, you have a second?
I'll second it.
John seconds, is there any discussion?
This is where we approve the preliminary and then after we can always go down right now.
You can, yep, and then, uh, yep, yep, you nailed it. Um, and let's say if you, if the commission did want to reduce it from three down to what have you, to one zero, um, you can bank those percentages for next year's budget, up to a five percent increase. Then that extra one percent would go into the following year's budget and so on and so forth.
That's new.
That is new legislation.
That's part of that new legislation, okay.
Right, yep, so it's, it's a three percent cap, um, and.
But you can bank.
Yep, yep, you can bank up to, you can bank up to six percent each year, but you can only increase your budget five percent with, with that flexibility, so. Yeah.
Any more discussion? Any more discussion? Hearing none Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And a yes for myself.
Thank you guys.
Anything else on that?
Not on the budget.
Okay. Okay, uh, we'll move to discussion of the dedication, dedication of tax proceeds?
Yes, um, per your guys' city ordinances, I am to provide you with what your debt is, um, for the, um, for the current year going forward. Um, I did not put 2025 on here. I didn't catch that until after I sent it out, but you do have twenty-six through twenty-seven. Um, your payments for these loans are about the same in 2025 as they are in 2026. Not a whole lot of difference. Um, but this is where you're sitting as far as your debt. You've got 2009 water tower, 2012 water treatment, 2012 Kingman sewer, uh, Goose River Bank loan. That one, that's already been budgeted for, we're paying that off, uh, in January of twenty-six. That's that big balloon payment for, um, Public Works Equipment, whatever, whatever was purchased a while ago. Um, the buy down account, um, that's paid out of sales tax and then Riverwalk. We collect special assessments for that. Um, yeah, that's, that's what we're looking at. Um, right now, uh, Bank of North Dakota, that's paid out of water fees, uh, same, or, uh, Bank of North Dakota for the water tower and the water treatment, that's paid out of water fees. Um, and this would be one of the big reasons why we had to do that water rate study earlier with, um, Midwest Assistance. Um, starting with Kingman sewer, this is supposed to be paid with, with special assessments. Um, this has been a discussion in the past, um, with the properties over on the west side of interstate. Um, so yeah, this will be coming due in 2028. Um, balloon payment for this one, uh, sales tax is the buy down, um, then Riverwalk special assessments, like I said before, so.
When did the Riverwalk special assessment start? Is this starting at 2026 or they, or they've been going for a while?
Um, I think they've been on for one, two years, I think two years.
Two years.
Was it just last year?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're probably right. That was the only one that I had to send.
I went to special assessment committee last spring.
Okay.
Somebody asked me today and I couldn't give them a precise.
Yeah, I know the, yeah, you're, I think you are right. The first installment was put on the taxes last, when I was in last year, that's right. Yeah, um, as of the end of, let me scroll up here. Um, as of the end of July, you guys have, uh, four hundred, two thousand, four hundred, sixteen dollars and fifty-seven cents in your debt retirement fund. Um, I sent out the priorities to use these dollars in the email and I can pull it back up. Um, I just have to find it.
Can I ask some questions?
Absolutely.
We might not want to see you call later, but on our accounts payable, I've got the, the bond series of the 2012 and 2009, and I saw the fifty-five thousand on one bills, but the other one was a hundred and twenty thousand.
On water treatment?
On that 2012 one, yeah.
We did have, um, uh, interest paid out in either March or May, it's always.
So what credits that, or?
It, yeah, this is, the way that this spreadsheet was set up years ago was, they for some reason included the interest in on this one, so I can look into that for you if you'd like.
Well, just, just to bring it up, just in case, like, these numbers are smaller or, you know, different, just because I've noticed that tonight on the table.
I'll double, yeah.
I've got a hundred and eighty-five thousand, if you add those two, that's two hundred and twenty thousand, so, yeah. If they less, that's great.
On the 2012 one you said?
Yeah, so the 2012, um, that I signed tonight was a hundred and twenty thousand, so that's a forty-five thousand dollar difference.
Okay, well, we'll check what the interest payment was earlier this year.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it can be lower, that's great, just in case.
Okay. Okay, I got that written down, we'll check into that. That would be my guess, so it's, it's the differences in interest and fees.
It could be.
Yep, but yeah, um, so yeah, so you guys can use dollars to pay off any of these areas. Um, right now, I think you're sitting fine, but it's your guys' decision if you do wanna pay off any of these with your debt retirement. Um, your first priority with your debt retirement dollars, that four hundred and two thousand, four sixteen. Um, priority number one is repayment of any debt that is causing a deficiency mill levy or within next year is likely to cause a deficiency mill levy. Um, emergency cemetery, airport, and rec could be examples of deficiency in levying this year. And what I mean by that is all of your levies have maxes to them as far as your mills. Um, one of them is two point five mills, one is four mills, I think the rec is six mills. Well, because of this three percent cap based off of the dollars levied in 2024, you guys aren't able to, you are able to levy to that full amount of mills if you wanna be flexible and pull some of your general fund, um, dollars over into those other mills. Does that make sense? So I'll show you real quick on, I shouldn't have taken out the, I shouldn't have gotten rid of my budget. Here, we're gonna get rid of this, okay. Let me find one. Here we go, cemetery's a good one. Okay, so the cemetery can levy two mills maximum, okay? Based on only doing a three percent increase on the dollars back in 2024, we're only levying one point six nine mills because of that. So the value of a mill, the value of a mill really isn't super important anymore. It is for a few little areas, like the maximums, but with three percents, it, it's not as much growth as you would see if you were just to say, yep, I want two mills. Does that make sense? Okay, yep. So, you know, if you, if the commission were to see a deficiency in any levied fund, priority one is to fill in the deficiency. Am I reading that right JR?
Mm-hmm.
So if you guys wanted to max these out and go up to two mills, you know, put a little extra in from your debt retirement funds, just to boost these levied funds, you can, if you see a reason to do that. Um, your second priority, uh, the repayment of any debt that has resulted in a utility rate increase or will result in a utility rate increase. Um, right now, we're only proposing to increase mosquito. Um, that's after doing the math, um, a dollar fifty isn't gonna cut it, it's gonna take a dollar seventy-five to cover nineteen grand. Um, same, you know, you've got your electric fund, but that's already got a plan. If you guys wanna transfer dollars over into that, you know, we can work on that, but. Um, as of right now, water and sewer, I thought looked just fine for, for their rates. Um, third.
Yay, it's still there, yay.
Uh, third priority, any debt that is financed by special assessments, giving a first priority to a citywide assessment. You guys don't have any citywide assessments right now. They're all, uh, assessments over on the west side of interstate. Um, fourth priority, any capital project that surpasses the required amount for bidding as set by the North Dakota Century Code. Um, and the fifth priority, capital projects for city buildings and infrastructure in amounts less than those projects for which bidding is required by the North Dakota Century Code. So there's any projects that need to be done to city infrastructure or city buildings, you can pull from there.
No question. You need help? Um, the debt retirement fund, that can be paid to these things here. Um, does it have to be paid or can it still continue to collect? Like, is it one of those where you have to use all the funds by a certain time, or it can continue to build?
My interpretation is you don't have to spend it, it's there to use with the guidelines described.
As long as we do.
Okay. Yep, as long as you follow your priorities, so.
And to me, to me, that's kind of one area that would give us that cushion for let's, say you had a roof, major roof problem on a building, or something that major costs that could come up. It's, to me, it's something that we would have for those things, whereas if we, if we spend it way down, you know, in an emergency, we wouldn't even have nothing to do, so. To me, it's, okay, what point is enough in there? Is it two hundred thousand, is it three hundred thousand, is it four hundred thousand? What, what are we comfortable with, so? And as of right now, I'm comfortable with the way things are right now.
And I ask that question because we don't have cash reserves, so it is definitely a good thing for those types of emergencies, if maybe.
Okay. But yeah, that's what I have on debt retirement, so. Um, and discussion of dedication of tax proceeds, so any other questions?
Me, who else?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, item C, outstanding utility bills assessed to property tax. I believe everybody has a list, this is the list, correct?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So we just need a motion to, uh, assess them to property taxes, is that what we need, or?
Um.
Why do we even need that?
You know, it, a motion would be great. Um, I thought we would be kind and send a letter in August with a deadline of your, you know, either October fifteenth or your second meeting in October, um, just to give people ample time to see if they can pay these utility bills off themselves.
So you wanna wait on that until that point, or do you wanna make ones that would put it, you know, and that if it isn't paid by then, that it would go to taxes, or do you wanna wait until that time?
I don't know JR, what do you think?
I would pretty suggest that we have a motion, we'll send letters now if they don't pay by whatever deadline you set. It will just be specially assessed.
Okay.
Jason makes the motion to, uh, to send out letters, and if they're not paid by the time, what's the date gonna be?
I had suggested October fifteenth in the email, um, cause they're due to the county no later than November first.
I'm good with that.
Good, so the letters would be sent out and, and the closing date would be for October fifteenth to receive payment, and if they're not received, they would move on to the tax rolls. Do I have a second?
Second, bro.
And Nicole seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And a yes for myself.
Okay, thank you guys.
Okay, art and adventure raffle permit application. You know, all the things on there, I didn't even look at that.
It is up on the screen if you guys need to see it.
So the date of activity, nine of eighteen to eight, eight twenty, twenty-six, is that?
Yeah, yeah, she's got separate dates listed on the site info part, looks like it's Hillsboro Public School, fifty-fifty. I, I'm wondering, is this the fifty-fifty cash prize for some of the games that they have? I wonder.
Well, I think they do it at all the sporting events.
Yeah.
Like they sell tickets at the sporting events and they draw on these particular days, and instead of doing it every month, we decide to do it all at once? Is that how that happened last year, do you remember JR?
That's what it looks like.
Yeah, so, so instead of coming every month and having it approved, they were asking to have it approved?
Yeah, it looks like.
All at once.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Which, yeah, I'll second that.
So we have a motion to approve the application and a second, and Ja- Jason? Nicole?
I, I was first, she seconded.
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay, we got a motion, second, is there any more discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And a yes for me. Motion carries. Private application for heritage insurance. JR, do you have any concerns, or are we?
Nope, it looks like it's complete to me. If you guys have reviewed it, the next step would be because there is competitors, we have to publish, have to send notices required and add to the Department of Commerce, and then we can hold a hearing on it. So just wanted to make sure you guys are okay with everything as presented, and then we can do that process.
I have one question though, on the number twenty-five. Application for the property tax exemption must be made and granted prior to commencement of construction.
For exemption.
If it's, so this is not.
This is pilot, yeah.
So this is different then?
Correct, yeah, exemption is different than the payment in local taxes, AKA pilot.
Yeah, so we just don't have the right documentation here?
It's combined in the same statute, which is very confusing, yeah. This is pilot, we grant it similar to this for Goldall and for Dago. This is pilot, we grant it similar to this for Jordal and for Dagleman and for other ones. That escaped me, I think the brewery actually, I'm trying to think of all the projects, but there's several.
Do they have to, for this one then, do they have to be primary sector to you then?
Primary sector is for the exemption.
So it's different again?
Yep, correct, different again.
Okay, I'm just trying to decipher like.
Correct, yeah.
When businesses build, where they fall in, whether it's a tax exemption or a pilot or a.
Pilot is basically a, it's your animal, you can do with it what you will.
It's five years, correct?
That's what they ask for.
That's what they ask for?
Yeah, they say that, one dollar for five years, twenty five for three, one dollar each year, excuse me.
Is that any business that can do? Or is that just a certain?
This is any business that can do it. Well, it's whatever business you guys want to have.
But we've done it before.
Yep, yeah, uh. Like I said, Dagleman, I believe it was the brewery, Jordal, Matt Construction. It's things before my time. Don't quote me.
So we just send those letters out and then then?
Yep, as long as you guys are okay with it as presented, so that's what kind of, I don't know if you need a formal motion.
So we just need to send them to those competing businesses that are listed?
Okay. Those, then there's a notice for publishing the paper as well.
Publishing the paper.
Cause then I have the official hearing, unless you guys had any, basically, it's presented to you guys to make sure the application is completed to your satisfaction. Because this becomes a public record, so like you have notice, the competitors, the competitors have a chance to see this application. And say if they wanna come and for or against it. If the application was incomplete, well, now they have nothing to come and say against because they have to have something they can review.
And you have approved all that I dotting and the T crossing, so. Hello, I entertain a motion to approve the pilot application for heritage insurance.
Who make the motion?
Jason makes a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
John seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And yes for myself. Okay, old business. Fire department discussion?
Um, I'll start on this, um, the fire department um has requested to lower their loan amount. From four point two five million down to four million. Um, I'll see if I can find my email. Um, with that, Kylie recalculated the numbers. And the amount that would be different, the difference in the amounts that they would have to come up with. For a hundred and twenty percent coverage, they have to guarantee at least eighty eight thousand seven sixty three seventy seven each year. Um, and this is per Bank of North Dakota rules for borrowing for infrastructure loan. Um, what, we have asked on a few different, we've asked about a few different avenues for um. Having the required additional revenue, we've asked if we could have their Sanford contract be applicable to this amount. That won't work, um, ambulance revenue, uh, since they were just districted, that's not applicable. Um, and a couple others, I can't quite remember the other ones.
What is their insurance check?
Yep, their insurance. Yep.
And others.
Yeah, yep, I can't, yeah, it's been a little while since I've thought about those. Um, what Scott Wagner suggested from uh, Arneson Wagner and Stewart, I believe. Is that the city could put up their state aid dollars um as this required additional revenue. Um, and then have a, uh, Scott didn't suggest this, but um, it would probably be in good interest. To have a agreement with the fire department um to have coverage for, you know, anything that sales tax doesn't cover. So, so that's the discussion tonight. Um, just looking for a direction on what commission would like to do with this. So as far as state aid dollars, um, we brought in um, right around a hundred and seventy thousand last year. And we're expecting that same amount this next year, they are dollars that we plan on to have in our general fund. Um, just as a tax relief to our residents, so they are a big deal, we do need to have, you know, any difference repaid back. So, um, so yeah, that's, that's the discussion point, so what would you guys like to do?
Need an agreement with them that they're gonna cover.
Correct, in short, uh, Bank of North Dakota links our money, it's guaranteed, whereas the fire department's money is also almost guaranteed, but not by state statute. So they like aren't guaranteed money versus the fire department, so we just have to trust the fire department. I have a recourse agreement drawn up, basically a promissory note. We pay here behalf, you pay us. And considering that we received some of the general funding, we generally fund the fire department. And I believe there was one other thing that we already handled the money for. We just won't give that to you guys until we make sure we get paid, if I remember correctly, so, cause there's.
Then how do they pay if we don't, you know, if they're behind, how do, how do they get paid or how do they pay us if they can't?
Well, we have, well, I'll speak to the numbers, but I know we generally fund them so many dollars per year in the budget.
Thirty nine six is what we give.
Another item that we also pay for them.
We do insurance.
Yeah, I mean, there's another item that we process their payments, basically, I can't remember what it was.
It's not their insurance payment.
It wasn't, I mean, it was a taxation thing or something like that. It was how they insured them when they get their fire department, when they get their insurance check. We'll hold on to that for you.
Yep.
And that's, I think it covers that amount as listed, eighty eight thousand shortfall each year.
So that eighty eight thousand is each year?
That's, that's each year, they just need to have as guaranteed funds coming to the Bank of North Dakota. They already have that number at the top of one seventy or one twenty five is their sales tax pledge.
Mm-hmm.
So after a number of years, hopefully, sales tax goes up, even when the rate stays the same, we'll have more sales per dollars. This is a fixed amount, this is straight line average, guys.
We've had so many businesses holding down.
Don't say that.
I'm just being real.
We always also had a business that increased their sales by quite a lot too, so.
Yeah.
So what do you need from us?
Preferably a direction or a motion on if you guys do want to um dedicate state aid dollars. Towards the fire department project.
And that's the general fund you said it comes out of?
Yep, state aid dollars affect your general fund.
And then you want that motion with the agreement?
Mm-hmm, yep, and I already have a agreement drawn up, basically, because we've been waiting for the final go ahead, finalize it. Uh, we'll have the fire department on the hook for making sure we get that paid back on any funding source they have. So we could attach to the lease payments from Sanford or wherever they rent to, to their insurance check, to our own fund and to their own taxes. And we can set them to choose to make sure we get paid back first.
And as of right now, with the current sales tax we're getting, that's eighty eight thousand, it'd be on the hook for if it stays?
Well, eighty eight thousand is the number they have there, it's actually, that includes forty thousand dollars, cause the Bank of North Dakota requires twenty percent.
Right, right, yep.
So the true number that they're short, if you know, is forty thousand.
And they're really not short that money because they just can't count the lease too, so that would be another sixty thousand.
Count the unguaranteed cost.
Yeah, right.
So technically by paper, it looks like it technically.
Correct, their insurance check alone covers that amount, if I remember right. The Bank of North Dakota said, well, that's not a state, it's not a state century code fund that they like to attach to. Whereas here at the city, because we have these dollars.
It's just basically where the money comes out.
Yeah.
So we take money out of.
But you get paid back.
We take money out of here and then they put it back in, right?
Exactly, yeah. I'll make the motion with that agreement.
You need any better, you got the wording on that? Okay. We got a motion, we got a motion on a. And uh, consistent that, that it's continued on, of course, the, the.
The signed agreement.
On signed agreement with the city.
We've talked about it a lot.
We got it.
Yeah.
Uh, do I have a second?
I have a second, Nick.
We have a motion, a second, is there any discussion on the fire department? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I say yes also. Motion carries. Uh, public works part-time hire discussion, do you wanna get on that, Jay, or is that gonna be Casey?
Okay.
You better walk up to her, you're falling asleep.
So, uh, in your guys' packets that I sent you on Friday, um, it had the schedule for a uh, for a candidate. For a public works position, um, the candidate was um, very open and honest, he's not looking for full time, he's looking for a part time. Um, and I asked Jay and Zach about their thoughts this morning because it's gonna be a topic tonight. Um, they are intimidated with the part-time schedule, um, they would much rather have a full time. That can absorb all of the info and training that you guys would need them to do more on a full time basis. Rather than having to, the concern is about having to train them in repeatedly if they're not there on a full time, consistent basis. So.
That's what I'm comfortable with.
Not that we're saying this because we haven't even discussed it yet, but what would your thoughts be if, cause we have the one opening now. But what if the next opening doesn't get approved on the preliminary, that put in there on the preliminary budget?
Did, did we put in for part time on the preliminary?
No, we put in for whole time.
We, yeah, we, we put in.
He just came to the table, he didn't need insurance.
Right.
He was part time, so then this came about.
Oh, God, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, it was, it's a.
Yeah, weren't you in that one?
Yeah, I just kinda, you know. I wasn't in that interview, no.
Oh, okay.
No, no, she couldn't.
It was a lie, wasn't it?
I missed that one, but I do remember.
Sure, the one you missed.
Yeah, yeah, from a, from a budgetary standpoint, you know, be saving thirty. Um, but the concern is, is public works is stressed now, how much more stressed would it be to have a part time? Where you can't plan on them, you have the schedule, but, you know, consistently having somebody know what they're doing. And fear of having to retrain, we're, we're kind of the bigger items this morning, right?
That was one of our concerns, right?
Yep.
So is that, again, does that differ from like our, did your view change from our discussion or are you not counting on? So again, I'll just, so one.
We weren't, we weren't worried about losing the opportunity to make sure we had a full time guy.
Right, so, okay, so I, I guess the caveat that I was looking at with potentially this person. Is if we can come up with the money and we have the funds set away outside somewhere to bring him on at some point this year yet. And then we still give them the full time opening that they have. And then in the next budget, we could adjust that full time position back to saving the health insurance benefit and stuff. And that's gonna make our next year's budget that much better. And they still get an added spot next year, but it's not a full time. Was the way that was one option that I looked at and I discussed with Jay, so.
I definitely wanted some of the guys to visit the other guy.
What, I'm sorry?
I'd like to visit with the other guys, though.
Right.
Our main concern is we don't wanna lose the ability to have a full time guy. And then what should we just discuss?
Right, and I, I guess my view, my opinion is, I would never make this part time relieve that full time spot. We need that full time spot, so it would be more in addition next year's budget. Where we can, where I brought up the possibility of, would that, could that potentially help you guys next year with that added spot that you wanted?
Now, what do you think about it?
You know, positions are pretty flexible as, you know, the necessity is, you know, needed, I guess, so. Um, that does bring up the question for me, I guess, do we continue to advertise, you know, that we have, that we're looking for a full time? Cause that was, you know, that was asked at the last meeting, so.
How soon does this person need a response? Can we, can we continue to advertise and we don't get anybody in a couple weeks, is he, would he still be interested or?
Possibly, I guess.
A month or whatever, you, however long you guys plan on advertising for a full time?
Yeah, we've only had one, uh, we're waiting on another candidate, we haven't set a deadline for this second round of applications. No, so.
Cause I guess the thing that I would propose to the commission is, or the rest of the commission is. If we as a commission kind of agreed and figured out if we have the fundings to bring this person aboard for the rest of the year in a part time status. And still bring on the full time, so if that was the case. And if they were okay with that, we could bring him on as soon as he wants to get going. But we keep advertising for the full time spot that's still open, so it would keep their current full time spot that they have. This would just be an addition that we're kind of agreeing to bring on early prior to next year's budget. With the weeds that we're gonna be keeping that worked into the next year's budget.
Well, the thing to keep in mind is some, Jay needs someone for streets, Zach needs someone for water, so, you know, when we have these guys, gals coming in. That they are, you know, learning more of, of that lane underneath them so that they can have that, that help.
John, any thoughts?
I'm having to get to this point.
So just to clarify, so you're, so we're looking for somebody basically to replace Bill for now. And you also have it for, for a new public works employee, right?
Mm-hmm.
So what you're thinking is if nothing, if we, if at the very least, if we get somebody full time now. And this guy could potentially fill in if we can't find anybody else for the new one?
Well, yeah, essentially, rather than having a full time, full benefited person for that new position in the next year's budget. And we would have a part time position with no benefits needing to be paid, so we would save that thirty thousand dollars actually. And like I said, and I don't, I have no idea with what our money looks like right now, if we had the money that we could pay a part time employee at the end of the year. If he did come on and bring on that full time whenever we find him.
Well, right now, you don't have Bill, um, you know, I, I haven't looked at you guys' timesheets. So I'm not too sure how much overtime you've had to do, but I don't know, you know, I don't know how much. Yeah, I don't know how much relief there would be, but, you know, Bill's, Bill was making twenty five an hour and it's. I think I put in both those positions at twenty one just as a starting point, cause that seems to be, with Angel starting, that's where he started at, was twenty one, so. So, yeah. I, I don't think it would be a strain too terrible on the budget right now if you were to hire somebody right now.
Yeah. So I guess my biggest question there, my personal biggest question and back to you guys would be. Do you feel you absolutely, and of course, you know, this would depend on the rest of the commission, but. Do you feel that replacing this full time and then a part time, three quarter time added next year would be enough? Or do you feel you need the full two full timers?
Well, it'd definitely be a benefit, I mean, of course, we want two full time, I mean, we have two deals. Definitely be a benefit if we, if we, our full time filled and, and like that. I'd really like to visit with a guy that's able to.
So you're saying you'd prefer to have two full time people that are there all the time?
Ideal in every world.
In a perfect world.
Get a guy there every single day.
Right, yep.
You know, that's definitely.
But, but you would be okay if you couldn't find that optimum employee for the second full time position? You guys were happy enough with this gentleman, that you would, you would make an offer to him, is that what you're? If you can't find that second full time employee for, for your time, I don't. Correct me if I'm wrong there, Casey, if I'm speaking out, out of turn, but.
Yeah, no, I think you, I think you're okay.
That's right.
Yeah, he interviewed well, you know, but it's, it's gotta be the right fit for you guys too, I do feel, so. I don't know, what, what's your honest thoughts on that, Jay, how did you think he would fit in?
If he wanted to be full time, he'd be okay probably, but part time not.
Yeah, he, I mean, he would, definitely, he could go on. He would fit in the model, he'd be fine.
Well, if we had. Well, if we had two weeks to, to be, still be looking for the posted job, and that would give you the opportunity to visit with your, with your group, your, uh, right, and just, and then come back, have them, you come back with us?
Yeah, like I said, I would say regardless, it shouldn't even be a question, we should just, we should, the ad, or the ads keep running, yeah, we keep looking, for sure, we're looking for this full-time.
Yep, yep.
It's a matter of what we wanna do after this, we find that one full-time to replace Bill.
Okay, so, is, uh, am I hearing the consensus is to give Kelly a call tomorrow and say we'll discuss it again at the next commission meeting?
Yep.
Is that okay?
I think so.
Yeah.
That gives you an opportunity to discuss that more with your gentleman, but obviously, we're gonna keep looking for that full-time position, that's a priority, so.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Perfect, okay.
And you'll, and you guys will just report back then in a couple weeks on what you're finding, what you felt, Zach or you?
Stay in contact with you right away.
Okay.
I'm leaving tomorrow for that leave course, but if you want me to come hang out tomorrow and chat?
No.
Okay. You're really nice, thank you.
All right, any more questions, John and Nicole, anything on that one? We're good to go?
Okay.
Okay? Uh, friendly reminders, any friendly reminders there, friend?
Nothing today.
No friendly reminders, I thought you're gonna be gone tomorrow.
I am gonna be gone tomorrow, Labor Day's coming up, too, we'll put that in there.
So, basically, I'll be coming to see you, and I'll get to the door, and I'll go, oh yeah, that's right, she's gone.
We can see Abby and Chris.
That's me, so, okay, I guess, do we need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
You got a second?
I'll second.
You got a first, motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We can adjourn. Thanks for taking your time today. Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.